It did disappear. The one I left is up here blocks. I removed the last one.
Yeah, I got this one, yeah.
I put some extra stuff to it so it weighed in now because I imagine the other way.
Oh, yeah.
This lot here, David is coming from Salem.
Okay.
He has that thing on his head though. Salem really agreed all of it.
Fine, so we've, uh, I know we're looking at A and R. What do you think?
Uh, well, we need to get these to be a public meeting or so.
It'll be independent. Right, for that reason. We can, uh, definitely instead. Why don't we look at, uh, not only the discussion.
Is we need a super majority for A and R?
For an A and R, they have to.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm the associate member, so I can know.
So there's six members.
Well, that's fine, in a, in a association. You have a form. Yeah, I mean, this is in a special room.
A little break.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, no, hey, that's why we had schoolwork, talk about these things. Figure it out.
But it's yet to you, if you need to.
No, that's a public, it's a private meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
You're right.
Three plus eight, so see. Okay. Good, well, let's get started then. All right, well, I think we're ready to go. Are we done? Good. So good evening, we've called order of the meeting for the rally planning board for Wednesday, September 27th at 7:30. We have a couple of items on the agenda, a couple of two continued public hearings. But the first item we have is an A and R plan review for 221 Main Street, map 25 lot 35. So, uh, if you wouldn't mind just identifying yourself, pretty, uh.
Well, Mary.
Yeah, sure. And, uh, we, the, does the town, what are we doing here? Land that the town currently owns or is intended to acquire?
intended to acquire. There is a, there is a section that the town owns. Which is this section here.
Okay.
This was two house lots. And we bought it back in.
So, so this entire, uh.
No, this is, this is the, this is a house lot here.
Okay.
This is a house lot here, stop, and this is the other half. This is the property owner, the 221.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the ruins.
Okay.
This is the parcel we're looking to buy right here.
So the cutting is parcel two of this, of the rest of this. Currently, this is what it looks like right now.
Right, okay.
All is one parcel, so there's a house at the very front of this lot that's highlighted.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so they want to create parcel two and leave lot one with the frontage. So the thing to, to take note of here is that this is a, um, this is a special situation where you notice there's no frontage.
Correct.
For parcel two, but, uh, the, the state law allows under the, uh, the chapter 48, A U N P, uh, that if you actually did note on the plan that the lot that you're creating, when it doesn't have frontage, that if it's being, that is noted to not to be, not to be considered a building.
Right.
A building lot, then if you designate it as such, then you, you know, the planning board can endorse.
Yeah, it's eligible for A and R endorsement.
Yeah.
Okay, so in fact, this is the lot we're creating and this is the remainder lot that, uh.
Well, this is the lot created, this is the lot two, and that's what.
Okay.
The rest.
This, this was the.
Well, right, right.
Planting fields here for the farm. And this is the house for the farm, this is the lot.
And how many acres, uh?
Uh, we talked about the three.
Three and a third, huh?
Yeah, minimum requirements, in the central district, minimum, uh, lot areas, 30,000 square feet, so they, they will.
Sure.
And what else is interesting with this particular lot is that this property line from here down to here is also Bradstreet.
I see, terrific.
This is Bradstreet land here, this is Bradstreet land here.
So, uh, obviously plenty of public access through Bradstreet Farm.
Mr. Chairman, this will allow the town to extend the ball fields that are there at Veterans Field, which Mr. Murray just showed you.
Mm-hmm.
Our, our, I guess, self event, say. So this will allow us to get two little leach fields in there.
Wonderful.
And so, and it's surrounded on three sides by town-owned property, all, all protected.
Yeah.
And the reason we need this one is because the one on the, one A, no, one thirty three. Rule number two.
Yep.
You stated something and said you cannot use it. We're not too upset about that, we're really concerned about the traffic on the road itself. Not as, it's run down itself, because this haven't come available, that's why we kind of jumped on.
Jumped on, that's a good location for it, makes sense. Larry, anything on this?
I'm just curious, Bob, why, why are you keeping this back little leg here?
That's a good question. The grandfather owned this lot, and back when he was still alive, Historical Society, it was actually 1918. Historical Society bought this piece of land for $1,000. From the fellow that built it here, which was Adams. So the grandfather, at some point in time after that, had the opportunity to buy another section. And the line would be about a year, how it's managed, the sub-society goes, the silver society. And this one is still there. And they would like to sell these, but it's too time to tell them, you know, talk to your attorney and see, because they supposedly have the deeds bar.
Hmm, I just wonder why you didn't cut that across and take, take that.
They're not willing to be honest with you.
Is there? Oh, there's some title issue along the back line.
I don't think it's a title issue, I'm sure the neighbors would be happy if we said, yeah, I got land and lot.
Sort of avoiding a, a potential adverse possession claim, you never know.
It could be.
Right, so just by, by carving it out, you know, leaving it to the, uh, leaving it to lot one if there is an issue.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And this is the line that comes across that's already there, and it's a loose parking lot for the preschools. But this runs, I think, we just take it from this part, you go straight across.
Well, looks like it meets all, all the criteria for our endorsement.
Yeah, as long as they have that notation.
Right, with that notation. And then once, uh, once we endorse this, when's the seller, go forward?
We have a tentative date on number three.
All right, well, uh, I think we need a, a motion to, uh, to approve the endorsement as, as A and R plan. Mark?
Yep.
You make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have unanimous approval of the, uh, the applicant's, uh, A and R submission, and, uh, which one do we need to sign? Do you have a, a mylar? Do you have, uh, Mr. Jake with his pen?
Yes. I think not the one to.
That's great. Do we need any paper copies, sign?
Yes, there's actually four, I think there's actually four copies.
Gene, do we? Okay. Oh, you're right.
Yeah, you guys can, you can sign the paper copies with your regular.
Okay.
Can't read that signature, you're gonna make my mind.
All right, you, you sign all these yet?
Who else?
Oh, which one's mylar?
All right, he's already signed that. All right. Okay, great. That makes pretty good deal.
Couldn't think of anything better.
So, Bobby, still, you're around for the informal discussion on the police and fire station site design?
I couldn't hear the audience, you want?
Sure.
This is, uh.
Good, I think you might want to stick around two attempts.
And getting emails here as well.
Wonderful.
And I was going to just point out, like, um, what, what's, what's happening with this is that the reasoning, or the reason that they're, they're forced is because they're going to the Z B A for a special permit, having to do with, um, an equipment that's in the 50-foot, like, um, set, front setback area.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, there is the option specified in the zoning bylaw that they can get that, basically, that encouragement waived.
By variance?
Well, not a variance, it's an approval, it just says an approval by the Board of Select, a special, approval of a special permit. And so what, what, uh, you know, what they're going to be doing is, is the, so the, the Board of Select, or I mean, the Zoning Board of Appeals will be doing the special permit, and the site plan goes along with that. There's no need to hold because the Board of Appeals is assigned as the special permit granting authority.
Mm-hmm.
And I can show you the references, uh, but they're the permit granting authority for special permits, so they, they'll also be approving the site plan along with it, but the planning board, um, can, you know, provide input, and I think that that's what the administrator's office is looking, is to see if the planning board would be okay, and I've actually already forwarded this plan to Larry to get this initiated, uh, but to, you know, formally request that, that Larry do conduct a technical review and provide comments, which will then forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals as part of their, and they will take, they have a public hearing set up on, um, October 19th, uh, and so we would provide.
Certainly we're gonna help assist them in whatever regard necessary, at the end of the day, though, when the plan, uh, the site plan's approved, is it a Z B A approval? Or is this board, is this board gonna sign off on the site?
Well, the, the planning board provides recommendations.
Okay, gotcha, so.
Through, we'll have the, we have the technical review consulted, so.
Okay.
We'll provide our comments to the Z B A, they'll, they'll provide, they'll write up the approval.
Okay.
For, as a special permit.
So, and as a result, uh, so I think Mr. Graham should be directing his comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals, once we do get plans.
Yeah, I mean, you just send them to, to us, and then we'll forward them, because they've actually, I just, today, I just received a, a, I, I received the Z B A application for review, so, um, that's going to be, I, I need to be able to provide comments back, so Larry's input will be part of that.
Okay. Good.
Which we have to get to the week before the, I believe it's the.
Aside from comment.
The hearing that they're having is on the 19th, so the week before that.
But aside from the comment, uh, you know, which we're trying to provide, they're not looking for any official, uh, vote on any, uh, aspect of it, right? This board?
No, I mean, they're looking for planning board input, but.
Good, okay.
For the site, for the site aspects, I mean, the planning board has the technical expertise and the technical consultant.
So right now, it's just gonna be Larry, and then we worry about.
Yeah, there's not gonna be a separate public hearing, there's no need to duplicate that, because they're, they've actually got the site plan as part of their package, they're looking at that, and, I mean, we'll provide our review expertise to them, and then they can take the recommendations and go from there.
All right, terrific, so now, now, now we know why you're here.
And Mr. Murray is going to really just introduce you to what, what's going on in.
Terrific, thanks.
In terms of the site.
So, if you wouldn't mind, just give us your name and let us know who you represent.
Well, with your permission, I'll introduce the team, because we've got quite a few people here.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that if you have any.
It's been turned out for a, for a second meeting for the month, so let's do it.
Well, if you have any questions, the architect is here, this is the architect, Greg Correll, you, of course, know him, the town administrator. Behind the architect is Neil Joyce, he's the owner's project manager, so his firm babysits the project, and he works directly for the town. He doesn't work for the architect, I work for the architect, and, you know, Dave Peterson, of course. So, with your permission, I'll just give you a quick overview of the site and how we've designed the site. If you have any questions specific to the building, Greg can answer that, and then any one of the team, I think, can answer operational questions, because we've been working with the cheese for quite a while.
One question before you get going, uh, when did you get the plans, Larry, or have you?
I've gotten them, yeah.
Okay.
A couple of days ago.
So, sure, good, so I just wanted to know where you were with these, you haven't really had much of a chance to. Right, great, okay, good, so.
Sorry.
About 20 sheets?
No, no, that's, that's absolutely just, good.
Sixteen, something like that. Hope you don't mind if I sit, because it's a lot easier for me to point at the plan than it is to, uh, and just for a little ease of reference, this is a pretty good thing to start out. What's proposed is an addition to the existing police station, which is the square cube that exists here. But the addition is 6,400 square feet excluding a carport, which encompasses the new station and prisoner exchange, which is a garage, they drive in, exchange prisoners, secure, transfer a location. Uh, it's a 14,000 square foot fire station, both buildings are one story, with the exception of a training host tower on the fire station, that's unoccupied space, um, it isn't technically regulated under your zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
We've got, the existing driveway for the police station is here, we're relocating to doing a central driveway right here for public. So we've got accessible spaces on either side, serving each facility, and we've got a central space where the public will be able to enter the site. Uh, this, this design is slightly changed from the actual submitted one, but it's substantially accurate. We have the apparatus bay, now, the apparatus comes out this way and comes out that way, so the frontline vehicles come out front, the second line vehicles exit out the back, well, it is a drive-through, that's not how it's designed. So this apparatus bay here will be posted authorized vehicles only, and the intent is call firemen can come in here, we now have parking right along this side, and all behind the, the fire station and all behind the police station, I wanted that. Is, the, so from this point back and from this point back, everything back here is secure. So really, the public shouldn't be going back there.
Right.
Uh, we are not impacting the entrance to the park, but we are impacting the park, because right now, the drive-through is, is behind where the fire station will be. So we're building an access road back here, uh, which helps with our drainage system design, uh, to connect this parking lot, this parking lot, the playground, and everything else.
Looks like the field's losing a little bit of parking though, right?
A little bit, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
In addition.
Just to let, yeah, there's gonna be, we're working with the, the packs of wreck, we'll be losing some packing, we're looking at expanding some areas out there to make packing, and, uh, one of the ball fields probably be moving down to that new ball field area, which will reduce some of the needs, so the transition period's gonna be a little fluid in terms of parking.
Sure.
And, and the parking upgrades for the park are not strictly part of, other than the bypass.
And that's different projects if we get to, you know, then.
Right.
We'll deal with that when we deal.
So we have a very large stormwater basin out here, which is empty ball field space, it's gonna be completely fenced with a six-foot tall fence, manway gate over here, manway and access gate over here for maintenance. Then we have a smaller basin here to recharge system, so in essence, three quarters of the site goes here, and simply gets recharged, it's beach sand, we've done extensive soil testing, and it just will percolate right into the ground. Likewise, um, this will recharge over here, and because this small area picks it up, this will burp, we call it a burping basin during peak storms, but you're not gonna be out on the ball field during a hundred-year storm along those. And we've submitted a completely D E P designed stormwater system, we are in the watershed, municipal watershed resource protection district. Uh, all of the drainage will be catch basin with hoods to manholes to a four bay with that kind of basic treatment. Uh, we have public water, the buildings will be fully sprinkled. Uh, we are sharing, we are doing a common septic system that'll be located under the gravel parking in the back here. So Title V requires, Title V, the state's intercode, requires that they consider this a single facility, and a single facility has to have a single leach field. Uh, and that will be owned in front of the Board of Health, the soil testing was witnessed by the Board of Health.
Interesting, and it's a single facility, given that they're two separate departments.
Right, but they're, they're, it's common property owned by the town.
Uh-huh.
So that if you have multiple buildings on one site, they'd rather you have a single leach field as opposed to split it up, and that's, that's just the.
You're right, I thought it was too restricting.
So, uh, some of the changes on April Street is we're gonna be painting April Street itself for a no-stopping zone in front of the fire apparatus, because the park, as everybody knows, gets a little busy, and we definitely don't want people noticing it. We have more than adequate site distances in either direction from any of the response areas. As just a kind of a general note, more than 80% of police calls are responded to from cruisers on the road, they're not responded to from the station, 20% are responded to from the station. The station's been designed, this is the principal access, but a fire, a, um, police car can get out through the apparatus. The apparatus is big enough that any piece of equipment can pull onto the apparatus and back into their bay, and they won't need to back onto the road. Uh, the ladder truck can make a full traverse around this facility. This is the only turn they cannot make, and the chief is, is well aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be a hydrant in the back of the site to support training operations and filling. Uh, we've done a complete landscape plan, we've submitted a photometric plan, and, uh, something I did forget to mention, we're connecting, we're gonna do a, a three-rail wooden split fence, so that there's no chain link, there's no anything that's really formal or secure looking. Uh, there's a gate that connects to the gravel parking, so that gives us a little bit of overflow. Uh, but the, the number of parking spaces been designed, there are 30 parking spaces dedicated for just the police station. Uh, I think it's, uh, 18 parking spaces for public use, and the fire station has, uh, in excess of 30 parking spaces.
Right now, I think the police department has two or three spaces for public use, and they're hard to use, so I don't think it's gonna be a big issue.
We, uh, briefly addressed the, the fact that the traffic generated by this facility is minimal. Uh, currently, they have, between the two stations, they maybe have six to eight visitors a day, and the biggest.
How many calls does the station get a day? Got two or three as well, right?
Right. The fire station.
Fire station.
Uh, and the police station, the largest shift is, I think it's 11, they have, uh, let's call it 11. Eight max during the day and three at night, means they have 11 people, and they do the standard three to 11, 11 to seven, et cetera, et cetera shift. So we really think that the traffic impact on April Street is de minimis, you really can't calculate it. And that's really, you know, it's, it's gonna be a generator, it's a, uh, oil-fired generator, diesel-fired, because this is a life safety facility, we can't rely on natural gas, even though the buildings will be heated by heating and cooled with natural gas, a single dumpster's gonna serve it, and that's gonna be enclosed in a fence. And that way, the dumpster truck can get right to it and get out of the site and not interfere with operations. Did I miss anything?
Just keep it, keep in mind with a fire station, that the intent is to have one fire engine assigned downtown, we haven't worked that out yet, but because the number of the call firefighters actually live in the center of town, and he's currently, it's gonna have a.
Sure, so you have a facility.
Substation in this, in this side of town, so that's gonna also reduce, other than for training, training purposes is the only time you'll really see a full company of firemen at the, at the fire station. They do average about two calls a day over a 24-hour day, so the, the traffic in and out of the fire station is gonna be really minimal.
Sure.
And, uh, the police station is not gonna change anything from what they already get.
I mean, it's, you know, it's important, really important, and long over two projects, and it's obviously, and you pointed out one of the most important aspects of it, this board really doesn't have the ordinary zoning approval discretion that we ordinarily do, but the one thing you, we, you have, would you mind digging through there and looking at the landscaping plan? Because I'm certain so much of this is, uh, uh, you know, regulated by and reviewed by the Department of Public Safety, and I, I can't imagine, uh, you know, all the ordinary things that aren't, that we'd be looking for aren't already gonna be met through that aspect of it, but the one thing that I don't think necessarily, well, public safety isn't looking at necessarily is the aesthetics, the landscaping plan, and, uh, and that type of.
Yeah, I don't have it drawn up or, or colored, but, uh, I'm actually the landscape architect, so, uh, what we've done is we've chosen for trees, we've got maples, we've got oaks, we've got, uh, cherries, they're all indigenous species, one is a Freeman maple, which is a cross between a silver maple and a red maple, and it has best characters, it's a bolt, so I consider it still to be indigenous. The plants that have been chosen, once they are established, will be drought hardy, we're not irrigating the site, we're putting six inches alone, the lawn's gonna be tested by an agricultural testing station, because that's actually state law now, to make sure that we're low phosphorus and, uh, that the lawn is designed for the plant that it's receiving. Uh, so we've, we've invested a pretty good amount of landscape to the front of the buildings to give seasonal appearance, so it's gonna flower in the spring and then summer in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have fall color. Uh, none of the trees have a place where they're gonna block lines of sight, uh, it's really important to, especially for the fire station, that, uh, because it's EMS, that people, when they drive by, can identify it as a fire station.
Right.
Uh, so that's why you won't see street trees in front of the fire station, you'll see a couple in front of the police station. Uh, and as I described before, we've got screening to the rear, screening, uh, to the fence, so we've got planted islands, we've got plenty of snow storage on the site, and anything that is not hardscape, pavement, rocks, building, will be planted and blown to seed or, or have, uh, the landscaping every show there.
Well, uh, you know, given that we're asked to make, give us, give us some input, I think we'll wait to see what Mr. Graham has to say, but I'm sure it's something we'll be able to keep moving forward for you.
Yeah, and I would actually just also point out that in terms of the, um, um, I guess the, there's not gonna be really a filing for anything, but in terms of paying for various review services, then it's actually, we don't have to worry about it coming in out of a budget.
Yeah, but it could be a bill directly to, to, to me, so if his bill can be directed to me, if you get it, I just have to make.
Yep.
In Mr. Graham's reviewing the plans also for the Conservation Commission, because we have to have a stormwater permit. So we'll be making a presentation, but they are approvals contingent upon Mr. Graham's, um, review and recommendations, which will be then incorporated with the bid documents, the requirement, um, and the specifications for bidders.
Good.
That's good, no questions?
Please.
Bill, uh, what did you say, the, um, public parking, how is it restricted from going into the back? It goes between the two buildings and then what happens?
We have signs here and signs here, so it's the big, it's the circle with the bar across it, and then it's got a plaque below that says authorized vehicle zone.
So, so they have their parking spaces, they go in, back out, come back out the same.
Yeah, right.
And then you said something about the, the loop road on the east side that some, uh, ladder truck doesn't, can't make that, or?
This turn, that one turn, the ladder.
Oh, back out to the street?
Right. It, and the chief's okay with that, he's, he's okay being able to drive his ladder truck in and then around and through.
Oh.
Yeah. And we've done what's called an auto-turn analysis, the chief gave us his apparatus parameters, and we ran that, and if, if you need to see it, that's not a problem.
Just if I, if I could add too, I mean, we were out there at the site today with Brent regarding the stormwater stuff with, with Bill, and it's an extremely, even though the parcel lane is huge, we've attempted to keep, uh, the buildings and the parking lots as small as possible, so that we impact the playing fields out there as little as possible. Like I said, we're gonna lose some parking, but the, the ball fields that are. Like I said, we're going to lose some parking, but the ball fields that are out there will basically be able to be maintained later upon. We're just trying to keep this whole thing as compact as we can and as usable as we can. And that's what the endeavor has been for the last couple of years, putting the salt together.
I'm just trying to place that, I know you have that big rock out cropping in there. You must have had to work around that quite a bit, right?
I think, I think eventually with that, we're really not impacting out with this project, but I think what we're looking to do is, once this project is done, we can scrape a lot of that soil and vegetation off there to enlarge what is the current parking lot. So that'll be something we're going to look to. The ledge itself will probably stay because it costs too much to plant it out of there, but it'll, we'll be looking to provide a lot more parking in that area.
This, this configuration isn't what we presented. Ultimately, I anticipate that the town's going to move into a lot of this space that's not going to be occupied by the drainage system. And just as a brief aside, we were directed to do an open basin as opposed to recharge in that area. Recharge would be nice because then we could restore the fields and that's going to potentially be an option in the future. But right now, cost is a concern and it's really important that we get these facilities built. And then a lot of the changes, if the costs come in, hopefully where we think they're going to come in, we might be able to readdress those things.
Right, right.
And we met with Tim Southall, who does, maintains the fields for the rec committee. And where that recharge area is, is we're losing a T-ball field, but that's an easy field if we play somewhere else.
Especially if you're opening up some.
It doesn't show on the plan there, but there's, it shows, yeah, the picture shows there's three baseball fields out there now that we'll continue to be able to maintain and use by putting the recharge area where it is. We love not to have it there, but practically it's, expense wise and everything else, it's the only place you can really put it.
Right.
With the least impact as possible on the ball fields.
Could have a couple of spring days when you're washed out of that, that T-ball field maybe, but for the most part.
Yeah, we can play T-ball in the common or there'd be plenty of room over at behind Pine Grove School now with that additional property over there, so.
How far are you from the well, town well?
I don't really know, but we're thousands of feet.
I think well zone, the zone two impacts just a little bit of the lot next door. I don't think even they get impacted.
It didn't get into the.
The zone two does not, no.
I don't think it gets into this lot at all.
Yeah.
In fact, one of the reasons why we, when we looked at iterations of the stormwater management, one of the first things we looked at was having a large stormwater man, right where the small one is on the right. We felt that with the well field there and everything else, we better off if we pull it away and put it over to the left hand side.
Yeah.
So it even has less of an effect on the well field. We don't think it's going to affect it anyway, but it's just a way of, once again, emphasizing that water, water resources are important and we don't want to do anything that's going to.
Yeah, if you can, given one that has no impact, it might have one.
Right.
Good, well, you know, aside from some comments, we'll, I guess we need to come back and have another meeting at some point. Or do you want to just go on with Larry?
My understanding would be that Larry would be working more directly with Mr. Murray and that, I mean, you'd be sending comments, but in address, once you get to, instead of having a second iteration of comments, that there's any, that you would, guys would work more directly to work out some of the issues.
And it's only going to be in the ZBA that's.
Yeah, I mean, there won't be a need for the planning board. I mean, I can update you as, at every meeting as long as it goes on. But as far as holding a separate, you know, meeting where we, you know, discuss the issues.
Right. Well, so my target date for comments would be October 12th. We can hit it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And we'll go back to, we'll ask the ZBA if they, you know, where they want to go from there. Okay?
Yeah, if they have, you know, any questions, they would, they would let us know.
Sure.
Or something like that.
All right.
And if you have any concerns or questions, you know, through Kirk, of course, we can answer them pretty readily. The architects here, if you want to hear about the buildings.
You know, as much as I'd love to, I think we've, taking up your time and we have a few other items on, you know, so I, you know, we're not really, as much as that, I'm sure we're interested in everybody, what's going to happen out there. And I don't think this information is going to change how we have to look at this for the ZBA, so.
Okay.
No, but Debbie, I feel like we're.
If you have any questions, we're here.
No, I think we're good.
So.
So thanks.
Quick question. Does the consulting engineer have the town's permission to contact me directly?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was, yeah.
It's fine, okay, yeah. I didn't know if that's your protocol, but I'd like to make sure in public.
Absolutely, no, but thank you. We've kind of figured out how, you know, how Larry's working with this board and the town, so I think we're good.
Great.
Just sit here, like, I guess if you have any email communication, just, you know, leave me in there.
Sure. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Do you have a plan?
No. Do you have a plan?
Yes.
Good, good. We don't see what.
You also have electronic version.
Do you have an idea when, you know, once you get it, you get all the approval, when do they look to move forward on that?
We're up to bid October 12th. So we're going to break ground this fall, assuming the permits fall into place. So we're going to be issuing, we're going to incorporate the permits and bids set as an addenda before the bids are awarded.
Okay.
So we're not playing change order games.
Right, right.
So where are they, the police can work on, do they get, they're open state, they're allowed? It's kind of like close in, right?
The police will be staying in their corners while the construction is ongoing, yeah.
So they, that building's not going to be affected.
Yeah, the police chief has agreed to save the town money and he's consulted with the department. They've agreed it'll take approximately a little over a year to finish the project. They've agreed they will, they will store stuff in this building, furniture from the, from the temporary buildings, but they will make do and work out of that building. Really, it's a, it's a big saving for the town.
Sure.
That's what we like to hear.
If they had to one year lease on that building again, I'm sure they'd pay dearly for it.
Twenty-four thousand a year to rent those temporary buildings. That's one reason why we were adamant about getting a, getting the station built because they're paying big bucks.
Why don't we buy those? Doesn't make any sense.
They won't sell those. They refuse to buy, sell.
Then buy for someone else.
We tried to buy them, we tried to do all kinds of things and.
Tell them to get away with this, neither way.
Plus, they're all falling apart at this point. They've been there twelve years and they're beyond their useful, useful life.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so next item we want, we have on the agenda tonight is a continued hearing on the open space residential development, special permit application for forty-two Newbury Road, map five, lot forty. John Sullivan's the applicant. It's in the outline zoning district. And we're, I think at this point, we've discussed some new plans that you're going to, in a couple of days, take a look at, right? Yeah, yeah, I just got them.
I put the plans out if we want to take a look at any of it.
When we left the last meeting, we were, they were going to change some of that, some of the layout of the roadway so there wasn't all that impervious surface and then essentially we discussed with them splitting how that driveway enters the two, the two unit building, right?
Yeah, I made some recommendations, did a sketch that you guys looked at. Their report of September thirteenth, I got a couple of days ago, basically says, we like our design, we like it. So I sketched out a few things tonight. Are they going to, are they here to discuss this or?
I don't, didn't hear.
But you, you did hear, oh, you did.
Yeah, drama's good.
I saw comings here, so I'm not too far off.
We're not too far off. We're scheduled out there. Well, I thought, I thought at the same time you'd heard from, from them that we were, we're looking for a little more time to.
Well, I requested that, you know, that somebody be here, but I can't, I mean, I don't.
I saw him walk by earlier.
Yeah, I saw John strike.
I saw him like.
Right, well, I mean, I think at this point, if he is here, you know, on one hand, you haven't had an opportunity to do a full review, but you.
Oh, there he is. Did you skip in with us?
We're talking about you. Good time then.
No, I think we, I'd like to kick this around and see if we can come to some, I don't know if he's here, that's some middle ground.
Okay.
We're still waiting for Rich to get here. I don't know where he is, so if you want to just.
Okay.
Go in order, it's fine unless.
All right, so we'll call, give you a sec, call, so, you know, stick around and.
Okay.
Thank you. See if we can move on to our eight o'clock appointment, so, good, thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, so Mr. Earnhardt, Mrs. Earnhardt are here. And as far as this one, this one hasn't really, Larry sent comments back several weeks ago and Mr. Williams has the comments. I think there are some issues that he's trying to figure out how to address. And so there hasn't been a recent middle yet. It's only been two weeks since the last need, so I, we definitely, I think they need some more, more time to work out some of the issues. So I don't know if there's much to go over, but I did ask the applicants to come here just to be sure that this is moving forward.
So the one thing I, you know, when we left last time, you submitted a proposed plan that had some multi-tiered dogs bays and that, and in each bay you were going to have different types of dogs that were segregated and, and we all know that the site, it's got a pretty precipitous grade there.
Yes.
And concerns in, you know, why have two, you know, the concern was that there's a lot of dog waste that's going to, you know, that's going to infiltrate the groundwater potentially, needs to be dealt with. And in addition to the urine, you've got to deal with the solid waste, which is probably an easier task to deal with, but nonetheless, both, both are significant public safety, public health concern and things that we need to address. One thing I wanted to ask about that, though, how many dogs do you plan on having in each run?
Well, see, this is the thing. It wasn't originally designed by me and none of my input was put into this. It was originally done by Charlie. Right, so I figured since they got the ball rolling, I might as well just go with the plan, all right? But I think I could be running into issues with the three tiered dog yard and separating and there would have to be three to, two to three people and each yard and it's just, that's bigger than me. I'm just small, you know, ten dogs a day, fifteen dogs a day. I mean, you know.
Seventy. Oh, yeah, because I think last week, last time we were here, we said, given the size, someone said fifty dogs per run.
No, we're not like your typical, no. Where Mom and Pop, we're small, we don't.
Very small.
We, they're more like family members to us. We don't go huge numbers.
Exactly, yeah. It's, it's a home based and it always has been a home based business.
So it's not really like that when they push where they have like three hundred dogs a month.
No, no.
First of all, I don't want that live.
Yeah.
We stream everything on YouTube and on Facebook Live and we've been streaming for over ten years, okay? So if you can actually go online, watch all the recorded videos and literally you'll see me walking behind the dogs and scooping it right into the can, you know, and then.
Well, I guess you've got to get down dirty with it. What is it, what, how do you get that off site?
Waste management. We have them come every other week.
And I would.
In a two yard container and we have the contract.
Well, so, you know, here, here, given that we have to make a decision on the plan you submitted.
Yes, exactly.
And given that plan currently has these issues, one thing we think at this point is, you know, we'd like you to come up with what you propose as a solution for it, but we also want to get the Board of Health to weigh in and see what they consider the, you know, the impact of this. And, you know, maybe you can come up with a plan, you know, to deal with it, but certainly a condition that there never be more than fifteen dogs on site would, would have a huge impact on how, how much waste we're talking about. So, you know, so consider those things when you, when you reevaluate how you have come back to it.
Yes, yes. The other thing too is that, you know, I agreed, you know, with the pavement instead of the rocks. I think the pavement is a much better option or the asphalt. And then as far as the fancy goes, dog noise, dogs, dogs are not noisy. They're very quiet if anything.
Unless someone shows up, you'll get one.
Yes, exactly.
That's why we have set hours.
That goes back to the, you know, fifteen dogs versus fifty thing as well, because, you know, fifty dogs is always going to be a racket.
Yes, certainly, and I agree with you. The thing is that we operate only between the hours of seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the evening and that's it.
Well, so, there's a lot of issues need to be addressed on that plan and these are some of them. There hasn't been any recent middles, so I mean, I know we're just kind of hearing that we're really going to continue it out until the next regular hearing date for this, which is the first Wednesday of October. What's that, where does that put us? Second, sorry, second Wednesday of October.
October twenty, yeah. I mean, October, yeah, October twenty.
No, 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 first, pardon me, the second Wednesday of October, it's not the twenty-fifth. Hey, Mark, what I'm getting at is, we need some change by then because we have to wrap this thing up.
Yes, and what I would like to do is try to simplify it if I can.
You've got to, those are your engineers.
Yeah, exactly. I agree with you, yes, certainly.
Did you say you want the first meeting?
Well, isn't that.
Well, there's two meetings in October. The second Wednesday is the eleventh. That's the first.
Okay, fine, I know. I was thinking the first meeting, we can, here's, here's what it comes down to. You want two weeks to come back with a plan or you want four weeks to come back with a plan? Likely the next meeting, we're going to have to decide whether we're moving forward on the plan or denying it.
I think it would be a safer bet considering that he didn't have everything already in place. And if I come back, and I would like to come back for one final time, to where you guys take a look at the plan, your engineer looks at it, reviews it and says, okay, we don't agree with this, we've got to make that change and that change.
Very important, and given what you just said, if there's going to be a change in engineering plans, get it in by the first week of October, so he has fourteen days to look at it. Is that reasonable?
Yes, and as far as the dog waste goes, you know, fortunately, we don't have any
wetlands around us, which is a really beneficial plus to us. The other thing too is that the bark mulch that we use, fresh wood chips that we buy from the wood chippers, the landscapers, it absorbs the urine into the wood chips and from there we'll have a bobcat come in, clean everything out and then lay down fresh materials. So that way it's consistently always clean because if not, you end up having the odor of dog urine.
Yeah.
And that's what I like to avoid because that smell right there can be transferred on to the dogs when the dogs are playing, you know? And I mean, in the ten years that I've been doing this, or ten plus years that we've been doing this, eight years on Wethersfield Street, you know, there was never really an issue of odor, dog feces or anything else like that. It's just best to have it go into the trash can immediately, as soon as it comes out of the dog, you know, and then right into the dumpster, so that way it's gone, done and over with.
All right, well.
Ask a question.
Please. Mark, I was just wondering, with less than fifty dogs.
Yes, certainly.
Would it be possible that your run in the back, maybe you're just going to have one run instead of three tier, one run?
I think it would be less expensive.
Would it be possible to cover it?
Possible to cover it, yes. You get it.
Well, I know an issue was you got, you talked about like outside weather.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we're here, is to get a building to put up because during the cold and hot weather, we would like to bring the dogs inside. we would like to bring the dogs inside, so that's what that indoor building is.
Well, that's, that's good, I'm talking about solving the drainage problem and solving the health problem. If you cover it, your drainage goes off down the sides, it's not where the dogs are. You could curve the inside where the dogs are and control your waste.
Yes, yes.
So just think about that, so I'll be happy to talk to you.
So, right, now we're down to one run instead of three, perhaps make it a smaller area.
Yes.
Still, still obviously fenced and, I mean, I think it makes sense that if it can be covered and then put a French drain of some sort around it, that's my term.
No, yeah, I agree, I agree, a French drain, yes, certainly.
But that's a big change from where you are now, so you gotta get Mr. Williams to, what was something?
Yes, now, if you don't mind, this is the engineer here?
These are controls, yeah, right.
Yes, all right, phenomenal. I appreciate any communication that you would have with Rich could quite possibly help us move along a little faster and also try to make it less complicated than what it already is. If we even skip the building, right, and added on a thousand square feet to the house or maybe a three-car garage, would that make it easier?
Well, kind of going down to the drawing board and that's.
It is, I understand, and I am.
I just want to help you solve the stormwater, dog waste issue, I think I can help you do that.
Thank you.
The rest of it is up to you.
Yes, sir, I understand completely.
But, you know, I think, given what, you know, we talked about today, knowing that you're coming back in thirty days, if you're changing the direction of the plan, we'll, we'll, no, no, I think you ought to, given what we just said. You know, if you submit a new plan that starts to fall in line with the criteria that we're trying to meet, then we'll continue to work with that plan. But if we don't have a new plan, we're going to have to vote on the existing submission. So what I, and right now it's a no, I think, if I speak for me. So have your engineer reach out to Mr. Graham and say, okay, how do we solve this? How do we modify this plan to get it back in line with what you want?
Yes.
All right, and then have him reach out to Mr. Graham and go from there, okay?
Yes.
See you on the second meeting of the month.
The twenty fifth?
Yes, give him a full month to get something going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny, sorry.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Good, how are you doing, John?
Good, how are you?
Nice seeing you.
Nice to see you.
So, we're, you're refining now what we're looking at?
Yes, we're short one person, the engineer, but I think there's quite a few things we can still discuss from Larry. Other than the big one would be the drainage thing without the engineer for that. And I think some of the other issues we can at least talk about that we've revised in the site plan.
Could one of you summarize what we were, what the issues are with Mr. Graham or you? What you guys were considering, I think we were talking about getting the, one of the catchwater basins off the front of the lot and move it.
Yes, Rich had looked into that, he didn't really like the idea between the calculations and this and that. You have to talk to Rich about that. That was one of the big ones, the extra parking was an issue. We've added the two spots for the trail and the path has now been put on the plan, on Rich's plan. So you'll see the two parking spots with the, with the new peystone path.
Can you guys see that path?
I think I could, you know.
Yeah, right there. John, watch it, John, watch it. Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
Yeah, right.
So it's a peystone up to the dotted line because that's, it stops there because from there is the conservation species habitat area, so we're just going to stop it there for conservation purposes. So from there up the hill will all be just natural wildflower, a couple were planted, a few trees on the hill. And that's about it for that. So we added those two parking spots and obviously on Rich's, not obviously, but on Rich's plan, he never had the added parking spaces, which we had agreed upon quite a while ago, adding the couple spots in front of unit two. And again, most of the pavement is more than wide enough and large enough as far as we're concerned. Four overflow parking and if Matt would like to talk a little bit about how this design has behaved or is.
Is it, please, yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, so the, the idea, how do I say this? The open space requirement requires us to not do anything necessarily generic, but rather come up with a integrated creatively designed residential development that preserves the open space, natural resources, reduces infrastructure, site development costs, promotes active, attractive standards that are consistent with town character. So the idea was initially, well, still is, it's always been that idea, to create, to design the property rather than it looking like a bunch of condominium units, to make it look like it's a farm property. So we have a farmhouse, a little smaller barn that goes with it, a carriage barn. And then we've got this big giant building here that John's family sat for years. So we made that look like it was really a working barn off into the distance. But also the property itself, not only the buildings, but how you enter the property, where you park, is all designed in a way that's familiar with farm buildings. So if you think about this building right here, there's a giant barn door straight ahead. We did our very best to have a straight path right into the barn like you would with a cart. And the same thing with other barn doors, the cart would come in and take almost ninety-degree angles and there would be cobblestone material that would have ramps up to the entrances. Same thing with this house, this is a very common design where there would be an island in front of a house. So if somebody had a cart, they'd do a circle with the cart because they're not going through a three-point turn with the car, right? But at the same time, you could use a car in that property, right? So this is very common for L-shaped barn design where you have this sort of circle. There might be a big giant tree, whether that's a red oak or a wonderful flowering tree. And then the carriage barns usually have this gravel or, you know, dirt entrance of some sort that enters all these carriage, all these carriage doors. So that's where the concept came from and we always intended and hoped that, you know, with the open space, I shouldn't say hoped, but there may be an opportunity for people to park here, maybe use a footpath to get back here. Maybe somebody would bike through the woods and find that they could actually come out this side, so. So that's where this concept came from, even the maintenance buildings designed in a way with the entrance and exit from it and the way the doors look and the windows, all that stuff.
Just curious, can you see, will you be able to see these houses from the road?
Uh, I think you might get a.
Just curious.
You might get a peek at them.
You know, it's designing the town to see, but we're not going to see it.
Well, yeah, but, but the people living on the property will, right? And I think the people using this open space on occasions will when they come and go. And I know you will because you're going to drag down their out of curiosity because you can't help yourself.
Yeah.
And they also want it attractive so they can sell it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, so it's a whole theme and it, and it stops right from the main concept, right through the windows to the, how you enter and exit, the parking area, the landscaping, you know, all of that. And it's done in a contemporary way too, so it's a modern twist if you saw the design of the buildings. It's not a, you know, let's put ourselves in seventeen ninety-two, it's what would Rowley look like today if somebody was to build a farm property? And what would the buildings look like and how would they use it? Yep.
Given how we use farms these days, we build houses on them. You're going in the right direction, yeah.
Or creatively.
Yeah, right.
It's going to look a lot nicer than it does now.
What's that?
It's going to look a lot nicer, a lot different than it does now.
Yes.
Been there a couple times.
So the last time, Larry, when you, there was a question you had about the turnout in front of the L-shaped building.
There's a whole bunch.
Okay, good, all right, what's else?
First of all, has the fire chief approved the turnaround?
We haven't got to that, it was brought up, but we haven't actually.
All right, because that's, that's one thing that I think that scheme that I had previously would have made the fire chief's approval a little bit easier.
Well, to me, like, the twenty and the twenty-two, that's pavement. That doesn't include the four extra feet of brick pavers. I mean, this thing is so big, I can pull a tractor trailer down there.
I think it's just.
The roadway.
No, no, we weren't worried about the, and, and I, I hear what Matt's saying about the barn door on unit two, that's why they have the, you know, the drive going in there where I had slid it back to make the turnaround a little, to ease the turnaround a little bit. Okay, so keep that, keep, you know, keep that, that's your design and I don't want to get into the middle of it. For the life of me, and, well, let me go back, you were doing cobblestones and now you switched to.
Well, it was actually always brick pavers.
Okay.
It was just never actually changed until you brought it up.
Okay.
It's always been.
Which is.
It was brick paver that was kind of like a cobblestone and I think the original conversation was cobblestone.
Orange stick that's going to go to.
Sort of give it a modern twist, contemporary twist on it. That turnaround in front of unit four, that's useless. Excuse me for getting all over your stuff, but that is why nobody is going to use it. And why put that semi-imperious or imperious pavement in somebody's front yard?
I think it started, Larry, as an island and then somehow or another it got sort of squared off.
Immersive service vehicles can't get in there.
Well, at one time, so what they would do, Larry, is they would, you know, come in with the cot and they would turn around. But I think that Rich's office, because they're, you know, engineers, that it to square this off. And maybe what we should do is go back to more of an actual island look in front.
Why the different material on the turnaround, what, you know?
Because it was brought up early on, less pavement, less pavement, less pavement, we didn't want a lot of pavement.
Okay.
But it doesn't function as a turnaround. I mean, a car can do it, but a, a mercy vehicle can't, it's not going to use that. Not going to be able to make the swing out and across on a twenty-four.
So right now we have a conversation between a civil engineer and an architect talking like an artist. Gotcha, service feel good, can't turn around, looks wicked awesome, it works with the theme.
What looks good about?
And we're supposed to come up with a unique design that's more than just functional, so that's the reason.
Given what you said about the turnaround and I see that, it makes sense.
It's super.
This, and this is, you know, we made this monster by telling you to, your engineer squared it off and then you put this material in that you hadn't necessarily intended. But I can see if you just had pavement all around, that might not look great, then what about crushed stone or?
That's what actually we had initially, was peystone around it.
Then it becomes a, then the peystone is going to end up in every.
Yeah, that is, I don't love it, it just doesn't look.
And at the end of the day, you know, I'm going to be putting the pavers down, I'm going to be buying them. I like Matt's design, the whole thing just flows together when you see it in full color. And especially, I have it in 3D, you know, it really, really looks good, so.
So I think, I think Larry has a little bit of a point in how this radius works, but I think that the idea of having an island feel in front of the house and allowing people to sort of pull up for visitors or guest parking, all that stuff is sort of what it's about. That's how it was originally designed a hundred years ago and.
Sounds like extra, it's almost like extra parking.
Yeah, so the reason, yeah, a lot of this design is, well, one of the things that we wanted to make sure was that the entrance and exits and how you park in front of the buildings does not look like parking spaces or parking lots.
So it has a Christmas party and then a few cars fill right in there.
Right, and that each one of these living units felt like it was part of a whole of a farm property and aesthetically, but each one of the people who live in it have a sense that it's their own house. And that there's not a parking lot, we have unit A, B, C and.
No, I see it being important to say, you know, if you don't have your, you know, your neighbor blocking in to a parking space, this turnaround gives you a little more ability to put the cars in the property in a place that doesn't inconvenience everybody.
There's no reason for it that it has to be functional for, when the rest of the site works for, if the rest of the site works for the.
No, and it won't work anyway, so if that's what they want, so be it.
I mean, if it provides for that unit.
One of the things Rich was supposed to bring with him was a fire truck detail of some form or fashion as part of this presentation, but obviously Rich.
I think there's just a matter of Rich going down, talking to the fire chief, seeing how he feels about it. And if there's some radius with the pavement that needs to get revised, he just makes it.
Yeah.
You should do that sooner than later though, before you spend more money drawing it.
We're on the same page, got it.
Yeah, good, good, good. I mean, my guess is you, you might be okay with it regardless of whether the other radius or not, or turnaround or not. So, okay, you got a couple other comments?
Yeah, I had suggested that you divide the garage spaces between units three and four in some fashion, but.
It actually, if you look on the landscape plan, there is a brick paver strip that runs down.
Through the middle.
Down the middle, it just never made it to Rich's plan.
And I think that's maybe all you need to do, it doesn't have to be a raised curb, but something that says, this is my side, this is your side.
Yeah, yeah, that's what David Cheek was recommending and that's our intention. Yeah, to do it very subtly, the people that live there will know. Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. And lastly, if you could go back to that other one that you had a second ago. Yeah, right there, correct. Unit one, the way that someone comes in and that lives there is going to pull in and go across the pavers and into the garage. Are they going to park outside of it and tan them as you suggest? They've got, they've got the turnaround.
Yep.
You basically have two parking spaces there, that's all you need, one and a half.
Well, according to Mike, is a little, quite a little heated, this piece of this wall is actually going to get redone.
Yeah.
Because right now brown hogs and all kinds of little things, they'll live in this wall. So this piece of this wall is going to swing a little bit closer and this is going to come back a little farther. So they'll be able to have a car here and a car there and there's still plenty of room because the inside of this pavement strip is fourteen feet wide as it is, plus you still have two feet of pavers on either side, so, so it's pretty massive.
Cars in there.
But to get out of there, if you don't have your turnaround, you're going to be backing into unit two's spaces.
Yeah.
And.
There's a septic in the middle of that, right?
It's a little bit further out, it's not in the way. I had suggested you come out with a couple of spaces directly easterly of unit one, on the back side.
Well, maybe, maybe Larry, what we can do is look at it in a way that there's additional parking, but it doesn't look like parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. My thought is that you just don't, we don't want to create a situation here where we have a resident that's using another resident's space to get out of there.
Well, John's going to live in unit two and I think that I wouldn't want to be messing with John or his dogs. No, we'll, we'll work on that, we'll work on that area, Larry, and what we'll do is we'll create an additional parking space for a guest space, but we're going to do it in a way that it won't look like a parking space, but it will be a parking space, okay?
John, let me give this to you, I just, that's what I sketched out. This we've talked about, if that's what you want, fine.
Yeah, the only problem with this is the retaining wall for the septic is here. So, I mean, there is a lot more room, you know, this is actually a lot larger than it shows. You know, and this is almost eighteen feet wide, so we can even open this up a little more.
Yeah, this can go back.
Bigger hammerhead.
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking.
It'd be easier if you went back that way a little bit more so you can almost have three spots there.
Right, certainly despite paving that, you're putting in that extra parking space potentially and, but you're also creating a turnout, so, so he doesn't have to do a one-eighty back in the airdrop.
That's a, that's a good point back there.
Do you want to take this one?
No, I got it.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, that's, I don't, I didn't intend to mess with their design, some of the things that Matt said and I understand where roads are where they are. I think it's important if our chief, you know, weighs in on, is he happy with that because it's back there a little ways.
Because a lot of that, where the little hand is there on that landscaped area there, that also can be played with a little bit, you know, which is kind of doing uniform, you know, in making a little different angles and, you know.
So that was a good back there, so if you, somebody has a picnic or a party, you need extra parking there, he's going to pull up on the grass for that night or day.
That's all.
Yeah.
All right, well, you know, how do we arrange a meeting with the fire chief?
Oh, it's actually going to, because we actually had just received the supplemental, so he's getting his own copy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I'll make that a point to make sure that happens very soon.
You'll have to be back with certainly, you know, by the middle of next week.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Larry, have you spoken to Rich at all about, not that, not that John and I would be able to talk about drainage calculations because I know I'm ignorant towards the math of it, but have you at all?
They responded, I just got the response letter and plans revised past a couple of days ago. And he basically said they didn't want to, they didn't want to eliminate that front basin and that the calculations didn't work out too well for him.
I think, when I talked to Peter the other day, you know, in making this pond bigger that way versus that way, the first question was water table, as it rises up the hill. And the other part of it was, too much water would bring the hundred-year water up above the solar floor of this building.
That's how I answered the question, yeah.
That was kind of how I got it.
But do you, do you think for the next meeting, Larry, I'm just trying to do the best I can because Rich isn't here, right? Thanks, I appreciate that. Do you, do you think you and Rich will, do you think the rich drainage wise, you think we're okay for that?
Probably come together, huh?
Okay, so the only thing I think that's outstanding, right, that I can hear of is the, is the drainage, but that seems like it's going to get eyed out, and the fire chief saying, I'm cool with this design. but that seems like it's gonna get ironed out in the fire chief saying, I'm, I'm cool with this design. Do I have that right in general?
I, I think, I think you do, I mean, I know we're, we are, we are close on this. That drainage is something that, you know, I think he considered it, gave it a, gave it a good look.
Yep, and then we, we did, just, cause it's always been brought up, we did deal with a little drainage from the street um, on Rich's plan. The other plan shows we put a little spillway off the street. That'll run down my property line like it does, or used to do at some point when, that'll help alleviate the puddle in the street.
Well, we have, uh, John Peterson's representative here tonight. So, uh, she'll be happy to know, you can report back if that's, it's been addressed.
Yep.
Oh, anything to help with drainage?
No.
I think, I think eventually they're gonna, another year, they're gonna be doing to pave and that into the road anyway from the town's perspective, so that.
Good. So, well, I think that, to kinda know, just to get, you know, where you're going, I know you'd like to get this thing close to a final decision from this board. If we put you on, same way we discussed at the last meeting, we could have you on in two weeks, we can also have you on in four weeks. Four weeks, we might give you a chance to do what you need to do in terms of plans, get all the approvals. We'll work on a certificate of vote.
Yeah, I mean.
Mister, once we do that, we'll circulate that through you and your engineer, I'm not saying we're gonna, that will be the end of it, but it could very well be the end of it. And we can, uh, but I think at that point, we'll try to have you work with, uh, the arch control engineer.
I would really like to go in two weeks.
Okay.
Most of the stuff with conservation, we've pretty much ironed out Brent's requests. And we batted the two parking spaces, that was their biggest issue from the meeting that's next week. So, you know, they're right there, we have our conservation restriction drawn up, which is supposed to be going to Brent within the next day or two, so.
Phil, are there any revisions to the plan that we need to, that we need? Is this the final plan, do you have?
We can just tweak the few, like the, the little areas and then.
So, okay, this is every submitted, all right, well, then.
I'm taking a couple of days off, next Monday and Tuesday. Uh, to put this on the eleventh means I need to get, get something back probably the day I get back, which is not gonna happen.
Okay, we aren't a little bit of a, so do you mean, I understand for that reason?
I, I think if we can go to the twenty fifth, between now and then, we can probably between Rich and myself get everything worked out.
That's where I'm trying to put you guys without having to come back.
And a certificate of vote is gonna be, need to be written.
Right.
Can be circulated prior to the meeting, so that everybody gets a chance to look at it, what the conditions are.
Right, and that's.
Work toward that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, but I think once, you know, you and Rich are gonna come up with the conditions to a large degree, we'll talk.
He and I, yeah.
Yeah, with, yeah, once you finish, I guess, once you, once we ironed out everything and turned between you and, and Rich, then you and I can discuss what conditions and how to get those conditions into the, into the.
Good, more reason, four weeks makes sense.
Yeah.
See you on the twenty fifth.
And then at least go out, you know, whatever we deal with with conservation next week should be all set too, so.
Good, then you're all landing it all at once and get started.
Uh, it's ten total, we're only using five, four point eight actually.
Fair enough.
You get a lot of grass tomorrow.
All right, just getting a motion, I think at this point, we're gonna close the public meeting. Well, actually, anyone, anyone else from the public that has any comments about this project specifically? Good, all right, I think at this point, uh, I just got a motion to close the public meeting on this.
Motion to close. You're not taking any more information, but you don't have a report from the fire department.
That's true, you know, you probably should hear back from the fire department first.
Okay.
They'll have.
Right.
But you could close it at the beginning of the meeting, of the twenty fifth, there's the additional.
All right, just, good, then we'll just, motion to continue the meeting to the twenty fifth.
We'll do it all at once.
Obviously, all at once, very good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, good, we were shorthanded today, John, so we're not, our procedural.
So are we.
Parliament, your procedural, good. All right, so, uh, next item that I think has some attendance here today, we got, uh, Old Main Street Road segment and Mast Dot is here to present some, uh.
Oh, no, they're, they're not here, I'm just.
You, you were up there, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, um, just to, uh, to give you the, uh, make sure everybody knows where I'm talking. We actually, I, I introduced this idea to everybody, cause I told you I was being, I was gonna be being with, um, Mast DOT in regards to the segment of Old Main Street that, um, is up there off of, it's that dirt driveway that's off of Cross Street where Cross and Main Street meet. And, um, I, I do have a couple of pictures here, just, this is actually standing, you're looking out towards Main Street.
Right.
And, um, zoom in a little bit, and, um.
So this, so in, in the foreground, Old Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, in the foreground.
In the background is, is one A.
We're on, we're on Cross Street looking to Main Street there, and this is the old Main Street, uh, the driveway. That driveway leads to like three or, like three or four.
And, and it loops back out to one A on the other side.
It, does it loop out actually?
Does it loop out?
I think it loops out actually.
I, I haven't been here for long, but it does, it does.
Does it actually? So, and, and, but it comes back out at, at termination of Old Main Street, not on, not at an intersection across, I mean, right.
Yeah, and that's the presumption is that, that it was a segment of Old, uh, Main Street at one time, was it part of a car?
Yeah, it was, the original rule one A, and then they, the state years ago straightened it, and this was left abandoned, or not abandoned, they still own it.
Right.
But they just never did anything with it, now that I know the neighbors are looking to do something with it or anything regarding the driveway.
Well, Kirk, you mentioned that DOT, one suggestion which.
Yeah, this is actually looking down at.
Right, okay, gotcha. DOT, is, is it a preference or is it an option to put Main Street right out to?
I think, uh, the, these property owners are currently, it, it's in the, it's in the DOT right away. Uh, it's a pretty large right away, and this is actually part of the Main Street right away. And, uh, DOT wants to close this out and connect their driveways, each individual driveway to Main Street. They would prefer to have, retain their access, but they don't want to be the ones to have to maintain this what is ultimately a common driveway for them, these, these property owners are using. So what they're asking is that they're asking DOT to turn it over to the town for street acceptance and that they, that the town would e- either accept it as, as it is or they would actually meet the, the standards, they would bring it up to standards and then turn it over to the town. And so the question is, um, you know, they, they brought, we, we actually had a, a joint meeting between departments to meet with, um, Mast DOT, and they came up with a couple of different concepts based on that meeting. And, uh, that's what I was going, that's what we have right here. There's one that actually has it as a cul-de-sac, maybe it'll be better if I just bring it up on the screen.
So this is the.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Dave Peters from the Board of Selectmen, I'm not here to represent the Board of Selectmen, I just noticed that this was on your agenda and I wanted to appear. DOT and the neighbors came before us a number of months ago. And the DOT's original recommendation was that the driveways be just extended out to one A. And the road, they would do the landscaping and close, basically rip up the pavement. And everybody's access would be to the road, that was their preference. The neighbors wanted at that time to know if the town would be willing to, that the state would bring that roadway up to a road standard. And then they wanted the town to come in and take over the road, which would mean we'd be responsible for plowing and sanding, et cetera, et cetera. And we discussed it at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and once again, like I said, I'm not here to represent the Board of Selectmen, but uh, I know I was not in favor of that, I mean, to me, it didn't make much sense to what do we, why do we need this dead end little road? It doesn't go anywhere, we're responsible for it, so our recommendation was that they go back and see if they could work out a deal where the driveways would be extended out to. But then they come in, I saw that, I had Kirk send me these plans, and all of a sudden, we're looking at cul-de-sacs and, you know, turnarounds. And I mean, to me, as, as a, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I, I couldn't support this. I mean, I understand the neighbors are looking for what they, whatever they wanna do, but there's no benefit to this to the town that I can see unless someone can explain what the benefit would be, it's, it's harder than they want us to stand and salt it and plow it.
So, when I first considered this today, my first thought is it's interesting, it's, it's the old, old Main Street layout. And these are probably some of the last houses that actually have the setback that they had at the time of that, when perhaps across town by, uh, Main Street, Cherry Street, that's about where, well.
There's a couple, there's a couple of sections, there's one up by, uh, the, go out further up by the junkyard is, is part of that also, there's a section there that the state still technically has. Yeah, so I mean, it's, and the state, I'm sure, and then I know that the, so, in talking to the veterinarian there.
Yep.
That has a little section in front of their house. They, they're wanting the state just to sell them that in, in front of their house, and they would just close it off. So I mean, it's just where this plan came from, I, like I said, I saw it out of the blue just because Kirk had it on the, on the agenda. I don't know where these plans are coming from or who they've talked to on the town side, other than apparently coming to you. And I, I just wanna voice my objections before you people do anything with it. I, I personally am in overreaction, I don't know how the Board of Selectmen feels, but.
Well, I just wondered, given that there's, the potentially is, you know, some historical significance to the layout. Uh, I mean, I wouldn't mind knowing what the Historic Commission thinks of, of it. I can't imagine, you know, given that, if there is any historical significance to it, putting a, a cul-de-sac on it doesn't serve that purpose. Uh, nor frankly does improving it up to current roadway standards. But on the other hand, how, I mean, to, to maintain an extra four hundred feet of roadway, is that gonna be a big impact on the town's overall?
Well, I mean, it, to, to me, it, it doesn't, in other words.
These are enough people.
We've got enough issues and problems and stuff to deal with without adding a little dead end road that serves. I mean, all over town, we've got common driveway, make, make it a common driveway, sell it to the people and let them have a common driveway like we do, like the Sullivan's are here tonight, having a common driveway, the, the Hareks are doing it over on Dodge Road, a common driveway. We do that, makes more sense than ever. They want the town to assume responsibility for it, which means we plowed, we sanded.
And we gotta bring it up to the state's standards, that's.
Mast Highway says they would bring it up to the standards, but for, for what, it just serves no purpose as far as I can see from the, from the town's perspective.
I go down that road a lot, I like that a lot.
No, it's nice.
It's bumpy, but it's cool, I mean, it's the way it is.
I can just drive a school bus down.
Historical significance might be.
It's kinda cool, the trees are really cool, they got some.
I mean, I don't see, from my perspective, I don't see why the, the people can't extend their driveway. The Mast Highway is willing to pay for it to extend their driveway out to Main Street. That way they could maintain the trees, the grass could be maintained, and it was basically maintain a character.
And Mast Highway, you know, like lease it, hundred year lease or something, let those people maintain it.
Yeah, I know, I think they just, they just wanna get, Mast Highway wants to get rid of Mast DOT, they, they wanna.
Cause they don't wanna maintain it, right?
Yeah, it's just a piece of, useless, basically.
Maybe they could do it a long term.
Those neighbors, I mean, if I lived there, I'd probably wanna buy, I'd be happy to take, like the, like the veterinarian wants to take over. Well, let, let one of those neighbors be in that piece.
In this particular cluster of, uh, houses, how many houses are fronted on this old Main Street in this section?
About eight or ten.
That to me seems like this, I was, I don't know.
And two or three of the driveways already come out to the Main Street anyway.
It's a big old town here.
Okay.
It is.
Some of them already come out, they're like, one way in the back comes all the way out.
There's like three up towards the Newbury side that already come out on a gravel basis out to, out, out to Main Street, so.
Actually, I'm seeing what I was. Tell the family get it thrown up. There's a big corn, tomatoes.
It's a common driveway of some sort.
This is a void anywhere, anywhere soon, uh, cause there's, you know, there's no fall town meeting that, you know, to shoot court anyway, so. It really aesthetic, it could come up as a street, uh, street acceptance for us with the spring.
I think David's right, they should just tell the, the people that live there should just get together and try to.
Yeah, we request the Historic Commission, I, I, I don't know, they may not have the, the means, I mean, but they'll at least let them come now and.
You could let the highway department come in, right?
Yeah, well, the highway department was in on the original meeting, so.
To me, I, I, I look at it from the perspective of potentially eight taxpayers that abut this land that, you know, I, yeah, they bought it knowing what the circumstances were, but it really isn't crystal clear, it's a public way, I don't know. It was a, it was a roadway that existed, uh, uh, prior to, you know, the, the modern layout. Uh, but to, to tell them what, what the frontage they currently have, I mean, I, I think that there's some, it complements that part of town to have that setback, it provides, these houses are not on rule one A, they're, they're, they have that setback and, and that, uh, I mean, I've never seen a common driveway with eight houses on it, we've certainly never approved one.
Well, two or three, the ones at the end, if you look at the plan, there's two or three, there's one, one, this lady says there's one that comes out already. And then there's another driveway that comes out where I used to make a turn over the path, so there's two there. So you're only talking about five. But the other thing is, this property was done back in the fifties, I believe, is when the state did that. Or before possibly, and all those houses were built much later than when the, when the road. Or was it like the state come along and abandoned the road after the houses were there?
It's not like the original houses. Oh, I thought, I always wondered if these were all houses that were.
No, those are all houses that were built.
They're all modern houses.
Yeah, so it looks like one, two, three, four. So there's seven houses back there, but I think in this.
And where the, you know, where the DOT would be paying to upgrade the roadway to.
Well, their preference was to bring the driveways out to one A, that, that, when they came before us, that's what they said was. Yeah, first, because that's the cheapest for them also.
Really?
They did not want to upgrade the road to, cause we, our attitude was if they're gonna give us the road, then it needs to be brought up to a road standard. We can't just accept a gravel path or something and.
Did you call the historic gravel path, could it be accepted as a?
I, I don't think historic has much of any to do with it. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think it's, not a building, it's just a, you know, it's a scenic area of it.
We have a couple of old layouts, like Ox Cart.
Ox pasture.
Ox pasture, good, and that's always been a dirt road, it's never been surfaced. It is a public way for the first thousand feet, does the town maintain it?
Yes, we plowed it and created.
Maintain it, so, I mean.
And the reason why, we, at one point back a number of years ago, we tried to have an override to remove that road. Now it's a nightmare because of the conservation restriction and stormwater, and it's basically a road that would cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve.
Do we have to improve the road?
That's exactly, we're wondering, we don't have to improve Ox, uh, Oxco pasture. Likewise, if we were to accept this street in its present condition, it wouldn't necessarily.
I'll tell you right now, I, I would recommend, if it's gonna be a road, we need to, we need to make sure that it's up to the, the road standard, because otherwise we'd be patching holes out there and, you know, I mean.
If we don't. Patch the holes on.
If we accept it as a public road, the people, people will be calling, complaining, well, it's a pothole, come down, fix it, my, so we don't, you know, if, if we're gonna accept it, it needs to be, you know, you may be able to not need whatever the width is that you people require for the width, but it needs to be upgraded so that it's, you know, for the next twenty or thirty years, it's a acceptable road. But it, it goes nowhere, it does nothing, uh, it's, I mean, to me personally, I don't, I don't see if it, any benefit to the town as a, as a town official to.
Consider also, if, if this were, if it were to go to the town meeting to, and you were requesting acceptance, how would this go over at the town meeting today? You know, that like, um, five, five houses might get the benefit of, of having a, um, you know, a main, a road maintained by the town. I mean, when, is that something that would likely, likely be accepted by the town?
There's plenty of examples. Selectmen is gonna go against it. No, right, there's plenty of examples of, of cul-de-sacs that have five houses on them that, that have been accepted as public ways that we maintain.
Yeah.
But they have no other.
They were designed.
They were designed.
They have no other way to get them.
And they're up to today's day.
But this is one where the other option would have.
I mean, we're telling people that have always accessed it from a public layout, that they now have to, that they can't access through that public layout, but they have to now traverse additional right of way.
Let me just add this, I'll keep quiet, is, right now, it's a state's problem, why are we going to take on the state's problem?
I mean, the state could actually dedicate.
State could, you know.
The state, does the state plow it now?
No, nobody does.
But the real problem is that the, these owners do not want to be the ones to maintain it, but they want to keep it.
They should have to maintain it.
If they want to maintain, if they were wanting to keep it, then.
They have the option of extending their driveways another fifty feet or whatever, it's not like you're going two miles, it's just a short distance to, and up to the main road.
You said the state would, that's the obligation, the state would extend their driveways.
Yeah.
The state, well, when they came before us, they said they would do either one, their preference was to extend the driveways, it's a lot cheaper and easier.
And then avoid, they have to accept any of the ongoing responsibility for it.
It's a nice way to end now though, because they all go to a stop sign.
Yeah, and, and I think that, if actually the state of that neighborhood.
Do you want to, just so they can go to a stop sign, we're going to maintain an attached street?
No, I don't think we should, I think the neighbors should get together and just say, hey, let's work it out.
I mean, I think, I think anybody who pays taxes, the town should have the, the street in front of their house maintained, but that's just, there is a street.
They have the street in front of them, extend the property lines and travel and call it that.
Exactly, you extend your driveway.
What's a.
I mean, but, but, there's some, most of the people currently, have always been served by old Main Street.
I don't know what.
Now, we're telling them they're not on Old Main Street anyway, they live on Main Street.
They talk to the state of whatever they're negotiating.
But Old Main Street.
Their address is probably.
But, but they also have a lot that sits back off of Main Street, now we're telling them they're a lot.
But their house isn't going to move.
No, you're right about that, but their front lawn is.
So, maybe the state would just deed the property to them.
I think they just want to build the driveways in the right of way, so if the state wants to widen the roadway down the road, they have the ability to just shorten their driveways.
True.
So, once you solve the neighborhood, like it's safer, the schools, the kids wait for the school bus there too, right, and that.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how.
I mean, it's safer than on the main road, these people should just take care of that road.
All right, well, I know what I think, I think the town should consider taking the roadway over, but that's my perspective, I don't know what we're supposed to do with this today.
Well, there's nothing, um, we can actually, I mean, if, if the board wants, I mean, we can point this over to the, and ask the historic commission if they have any input they would like to give. They may come back and say it's of no significance to the town, and then we might look at the other options, you know, just to, but I don't, this is not going to go anywhere anytime soon. So, this is only an update, I, I'm not trying to spark any controversy, but.
You certainly have.
But, I mean, we do, I mean, there are the other options that, that, they, I mean, the, the board can just advise that these owners, like, request that if they want to keep the, their access to that drive, then they, then they have. Mass DOT deed them over the land and then they have an agreement, they intend it themselves.
What if they do now?
I mean, I think they can advocate for themselves a little bit on this and decide, you know, because.
What they're doing now is just nothing.
Right, waiting for someone to make a decision, and I think that they can see.
How do they get into their houses if they don't have their?
Well, what will Flauzay Drive where they probably have a deal with, oh, Ken's right over there, Ken's got.
They plowed it, they just. My concern is that when, when they came before the board of selectmen, Representative Brad Hill was there, representatives of Mass Highway and, and directly Joe over there. And I think we kind of said, look, our, our preference was kind of like, extend the driveways, but go back and come up with something. Now, this, where this is coming from, oh, this is drawing up a Plan A and Plan B. As far as I know, with no input from anyone from the town.
I certainly agree that if, particularly if those landowners were okay with extending their driveways to the street, then there's your answer, but if all of them collectively have a different opinion, then I think we should probably look at it a little bit more.
I think we need to have a meeting with everyone, with Mass Highway, et cetera, to see, where are they coming up with this?
Well, should provide a little background, because Brad Hill was the one who actually called the meeting, that meeting back.
I think the neighbors went to Brad Hill to, to deal with the state highway.
Yeah, and they organized the meeting and, and I attended, their highway was there, the lead fire was there. I mean, people gave input, but it was, it was very conceptual at the time. These plans came from like, you know, the what if scenario, if, if you want to, if the town were to be, or to get these into a point where the town might accept them. This is what you would, you'd have to have one of, one of these two concepts. That wasn't, it wasn't a promise to say that the town would accept them, because I mean, it was understood that they would have to go to a town meeting. And, and it was brought up at the time that, understood that, that you have a small handful of people who would be benefiting from the town providing the maintenance while, you know, they get to keep, you know, their driveway situation, so.
If I can, Joe Perry from Board of Selectmen, that when the presentation was made to us, and we said that we, it would have to be an improved road and the state would have to give us the improved road. That's when they, we were very reluctant to spend the money to improve the road, so we're saying, go out and extend the driveways. But they were, they were not in favor of spending the money to pave and bring it up to grade.
So, yet they want to, one way or another, unload this problem, Brad Hill must have been involved at the behest of the, the homeowners though?
The homeowners.
So, as well, I, I think the state, the state controls the property, I think it's the state's obligation to come to the town. Probably back to the board of selectmen, I thought they would be coming back to us.
Sure.
But they didn't, you know, I don't know how Kirk got it versus anybody else, but I'm not faulting him, I'm just saying that, you know, this whole thing is kind of like skirted around. Nobody really wants to take ownership of it, but they're promised, that they're apparently promising to these people that they're going to solve their problem, but they're going to solve it on the backs of the town rowing, not, not on anybody else. It's not really a problem, I don't see it as a problem, because people extend their driveway and they're all set, you know? We'll give them an extra quarter acre land or eighth of an acre or something, whatever it takes.
I mean, it really is unless the town sees something fit to the town, and I think you would have to demonstrate that at the town meeting for it to even pass the town meeting.
I mean, I think potentially is there, would be, would a decision to extend those driveways out to the Route one A, cutting off their access over Old Main Street have a detrimental impact on their property values? I mean, I potentially could see that as a consequence.
Well, I don't know, in other words, what it boils, what it really boils down to is the state wants to give us the land.
Right.
So, they, they want to get out of, they want to give, satisfy, if people want a driveway, they want to give the people a driveway and give us, I guess, the rest of the land. They don't want to do that, they want to give us the whole thing and just get out of it.
Yeah, I mean, if they want, I think there's a difference between them agreeing to pave the driveways all the way out to one A, and retaining the right of way. Basically, just so that if it did end up right, changing the layout, they could wipe out those driveways again, because they're giving these people an ease and they don't want to.
I never got, I don't think we ever got a, an answer to the fact that if they extended the driveways, would.
Would they be granting the fee to the homeowners?
Would maintain control of the property, I don't think we ever, I don't recall ever discussing, that's why I say, I think, it's up to Mass, I would just let the plan sit and let Mass Highway come back to us.
I, I get the sense we don't have to do anything, take no action at this point, but I think if.
No action to take.
Right.
I mean, the only, only thing I, if you want, if the board wants, we need to refer it to the historic commission to see if there's any significance.
Yeah, I think it's worth, it's kind of worth it, and then, gentlemen, do you think, you know, came in front of your board next and you thought that, you heard again, it would be there again, is it Board of Selectmen?
Well, well, I mean, I thought, like I say, I saw it on your agenda when we, because we knew we were coming tonight for the other items, so I said, well, I'm going to sit here and see what's going on, because we have no reason for them, Debbie, you know, was here earlier and nobody's come to us and said, this is what we're planning on doing or. This is what, and we kind of left it with them to come back to us and.
And them being the DOT.
What they might want to do, because we never made a decision one way or the other, all we said was, we'll take a look at it, we weren't fussy about creating another town road for sure. But on the other hand, the decision was never made, it was get together with the neighbors and, and I know, for, for one, I've been approached a couple of times by the veterinarian people out there, that they, can you talk to Brad Hill about us buying that section of the road? It cuts in front of their farm and we'd like to, we'd like to own that, and yeah, that's fine with us, but that's a little section that's on the other side of Cross Street, but.
It's kind of interesting looking at these plans, because they have payment notes and they have proposed roadway and they specify six inches of pavement over twelve inches of gravel.
Yeah, no, they were going to, they were going to upgrade the road to the road specification.
Who did this plan?
I mean, it sounds like, it looks like they were going to.
Oh, they were going, yeah, because we weren't going to accept it anyway unless it was, because right now it's all potholes, it's broken up pavement and potholes and so on and so forth.
I think when the question came up as to who was going to do the paving, that's when they backed off, because they want, they wanted us.
They somehow moved forward on a plan and.
September eleven, twenty seventeen plan, it looks like they have, I mean, they're proposing this, they're not proposing for the town to do it, I don't think.
Well, yeah, no, and the other issue was here is that they were willing to upgrade it if the town accepted the road, then they would come in and pave it. Well, I returned to them was, well, we're not going to accept the road unless it meets the planning board requirements for a road, so. They said, well, we're not going to spend the money to pave it if you guys aren't going to take it, so, I mean, it's like.
But within that is the idea that we could, they could make it to planning board specs and, and if the town, if the state's willing to foot the bill. The only thing holding us back is the maintenance expense going forward on a, on a roadway that's built to spec.
Well, the biggest thing holding back is town meeting has to vote to accept the road.
Got you.
And if town, and if we, if all that's done, the town meeting votes it down, the state doesn't want, and the state doesn't want it, state wants us to have the town meeting, basically, you accept it first. Then they'll come in and fix it up, but our attitude is no, because we all know how the state works.
It's so curious, yeah.
We take it, they're going to, they're going to, you know, they may fix it ten years from now, you know, I mean, it's.
I mean, the ordinary instance, the developer is going to speak to the fire to.
Yeah.
The state's going to do what.
It's a mess, and they need to come in with a, with a, with a plan and, you know, we can kick this around forever, but it's just under the present circumstances, there's no way as a member of Board of Selectmen could I vote for it?
Could we vote at town meeting to accept a roadway based on a, as, as a proposed, proposed plan?
Well, you guys, when we accept roads, what do we do, we ask the planning board to come in and give us a report that the road.
But we, we don't, we don't recommend until we have an as-built plan showing what's on the ground.
Yeah, it's up to you, if you want to come in and recommend that, I guess you probably could have it all.
It seems like at the end of the day, we need Board of Selectmen recommendation for it before, you know, the town will get behind it too.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a mess, and it's been a mess for fifty years and that's why it's never been changed and, you know, and the answer is build your, move your driveway, make your driveway out to the highway.
I, I mean, I guess I just feel a little bit.
I understand what you're saying.
Interest for the people in that neighborhood, that buffer creates that neighborhood.
I mean, you could take, take, I believe it's.
They maintain it now, or they just take it over, that's what's, you know what I mean?
They could take it over privately, that would be great.
You know what I mean, and they, oh yeah, that's a way we pay for it.
If you look at Cindy Lane up there, that, that, those people have been living in, in very expensive houses for how many years now on Cindy Lane, it's still a private road, because we haven't checked the road yet. And they have to plow it and maintain it and take care of it, so, you know, this is all, we've got roads like that that we haven't accepted, but out of the blue, we're going to take this one and.
Well, we are pushing, we are pushing on Leslie Road to do something with that, you know, there's, that's not, and, and I know you probably hear it as much as anyone from the residents up there, what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, they, they pay taxes and they want their road plowed.
And what, what could come out of this tonight is I could give Mass DOT a little direction, I mean, if, if the board wants to put a, basically say that it's not really amendable to even taking this to town meeting, first street excepted. Mass DOT won't have an issue, they, they already have a preference, so we can tell them, like, if, that the planning board has already, has agreed, that, you know.
Not a plan we'd get behind.
Not a plan we'd particularly be, you know.
I can't say that right now, though, I think.
And that's why.
Where, where did you get these drawings?
Oh, this is Mass DOT.
They sent it, they sent it to you?
Yeah, yeah, Mass DOT.
I think we should, you know, I would recommend we get back to them and say, look, you know, this needs to be discussed by the planning board, the Board of Selectmen or whatever.
Yeah.
So that everybody is on the same.
This seems like a public hearing, I'm for sure, I just don't know in front of who.
Well, it'd be.
Some kind of a public meeting.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there would be a public meeting, and they, I mean, we can get them to come back, maybe.
Right, they need them all, yeah.
Why did this come up, did someone complain about the potholes or something to them, like why?
Oh, the neighbors, the neighbors want.
Wanted to have. Someone complained about it?
The neighbors basically, I think, want someone to plow that road, not them.
Oh, they just don't want to can it.
It's current state.
So, they, I think they went to.
They said, when are plowing, so now they, the state said if the town, we give it to the town, then the town will plow, this is, it's kind of like.
I mean, we could have Mass DOT come in and, but, I mean, I think I can, I can go on and, and if the board wants to take some kind of a motion to let them know.
At the end of the day, all we can do is recommend to the Board of Selectmen whether to accept it or not, but at some point, we'd have to have a, can we just, on our own initiative?
Well, if the planning board.
Schedule a, a public meeting for, to, to review?
If the planning board isn't going to make a recommendation, isn't even going to consider that, that the town, recommending that the town meeting would accept it, we know that the Board of Selectmen wouldn't. I mean, I mean, we could inform Mass DOT that, you know, that this idea, this concept's not going to go anywhere, it's not likely to be approved. I mean, we could take it to town meeting, but it would go without the blessing of both the planning board and the.
I don't, I don't think there's any way that, if the planning board accepts, makes a recommendation to accept this and it's not up to standards, I don't know what you do the next time a contractor comes in and says, I want you to.
And I don't.
Oh, no, I, I just think we can't.
And we're not going to recommend town meeting adopt it unless it's up to the standards, so.
I, I, I think you're absolutely right, I think we need, but I don't think we should go to DOT and say, no matter what you do to this street, we're not ever going to consider accepting it, at this point, I think we need to find out if there is some public support for it, particularly the people that abut this, you know? And I think that, you know, oh, tonight's not a great night to make any decisions, because we don't have, you know, half the board's not here, but, you know, I think. I, I, you know, can only speak for myself, but as one member, I'm, I'm persuaded that potentially this is something the town should consider accepting, given that there are a number of people impacted by it, but, you know, we need to know more, I think.
But is the basis of, is it historic, is that where what I should do, should I send this over to the historic districts commission and get their input?
Well, the next person that needs to act on it.
I, I, firstly, I'd like to hear the state come in.
Yeah.
And say, yeah, we're going to upgrade the road and we'll take a chance whether you accept it or not.
So, how do we get the state to, you know, you know?
Oh, I, I'll just tell them, this was only, I was only, I was going to have them in in the next.
Okay, so we're just going to have.
They just couldn't come in, but we, I have these plans and I wanted to go and just update you guys on.
Maybe we can make our deal, tell them to upgrade the road and we'll plow it, they maintain the road and we'll plow it, they, they're hot talk.
Do the road, we're not going to force them to do the road at any timeframe, so, right, they could say they're going to do it and they push it ten years down the road.
The town was accepted.
I just wanted to know what the Flauzians are, for the, for the people who live there and for the town, so what is the state actually proposing? Are they proposing to just do the driveway, or are they proposing to give those people the property?
Right.
Or what are all the scenarios?
So, we could have, so we'll do another informal meeting, where we do invite the state and obviously the BOS, and we somehow, but I mean, pardon me, informal meeting, how do we notify? There's no requirement to notify abutter in an informal meeting.
Well, I think you give a.
We could notify them.
When we, when the selectmen held the meeting, I believe we wrote a letter to everybody saying we were.
Okay, because that's what I think we should appropriately do.
You know, and appropriately, obviously, politeness, but I would, I would guess if you've got these drawings, the state's probably already agreed with these people that they'll upgrade the road, I mean, it's. I mean, why would they do all these drawings if they haven't come to some, you know, gentleman's agreement that.
Right.
This is what they're going to do, meanwhile, they haven't come to us and asked us anything about anything.
But I agree, you know, a hundred percent that the town can't accept something that's a proposal.
No, I mean, I.
So, you know, as-built, take the town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, with, likely with this. You know, with, likely with this board's endorsement, I don't know. You know? But anyhow, so.
Well, I can have Mast D O T come to either the October twenty-fifth or I think that was gonna be the.
That meeting's starting to get busy.
I was gonna say, that's a busy meeting.
Yeah.
I would say you put it off longer than that, but when you, when they have them come in, let the Board of Selectmen know.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'll let them know that, that, well, you know, they were gonna come in here in the fall. I, I think we had, we had put, like, talked about October twenty-fifth, but, I mean, if it needs to be later, then we can do it.
Well, I mean, you guys, this is not a top priority. You guys got a lot of things going, I don't know what, you know, I'm just saying that sometime before the end of the year, we probably should have Mast D O T.
You don't know if they'll be able to come in at all in the next four months. I don't know if busy those weekends.
Well, they, I mean, I've talked to the guys, the guys who set.
We should have a list, usually give a list of questions that we have too before, when he comes in, be like, you know, what if the owners weren't accepted? When you do that, you know, variations, so that way you can have answers to the questions. Instead of getting questions, I never go back and talk to the other people with the answers.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll pass along, like, you know, the general sense of the.
Then I think we should probably look at the November meeting after we confer with D O T.
Yeah.
And then, but I think.
Send a note to Brad Hill too.
Right, note, that's, the fact that, you know, you got some constituent services there and they got somebody out there to, to look over it. Obviously, somebody at the state wants this, some attention paid to this and the town not to just ignore it, so.
I mean, if the town accepts it, we'll, we'll take care of it as a town road. I mean, no, it's not like we will refuse to fulfill our obligation, but it's just strange, the whole thing is strange and.
Right, and particularly where, I mean, it seems like this one section where there's eight houses is a different scenario than the veterinarian who's not, you know, we, I wouldn't feel like that necessarily, you know, we wouldn't carve out a street for that one veterinarian and therefore accept a turnout in front of his house. That would be uniquely benefiting a single property, but potentially where there's eight people that, you know, abut this.
But if you, but if you look, they were already, they were already extending a couple of driveways on this plan, you know what I mean?
Technically, the five.
Yeah, the five, the first five and the, like, you were saying, that there's actually three right here.
They're already, they're already extending two or three of them out to the road on this plan.
Last three.
So now they're down to four instead of eight or anything, so.
Alright, see what goes. Tell us, Jim, thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, take care.
Thanks.
Okay, were you here for this?
No, five forty Weathersfield Street.
Boy.
Did I miss that?
You should've looked at the agenda.
I didn't, I was, it was.
It's not on the meeting?
Oh, I thought it was in the paper.
I'm sorry, five forty Weathersfield.
Five forty Weathersfield, that is the, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, I thought it was in the, the little ragged newspaper.
Poor thing.
Yeah, you know, we should, I should always tell people that we keep the agenda right here just so you know what, what's hap, what.
Yeah, put a note on the.
It wasn't in the paper.
Yeah, it was originally, yeah, but, I didn't think that the.
Proposed barn and two houses and.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that wasn't, that was Mill Road.
No.
That's what, we had to cancel that because of the issue with the, with the ad. I'm not sure why, why it's Weathersfield, because I.
Mill Road?
Well, Mill Road, it's Mill and Dodge Road, there is a lot where, you're talking about the accessory barn for Douglas Stone?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's off Dan, that's off Dodge and Mill.
Dodge and Mill Road.
Not Weathersfield.
Yeah, but we actually moved that, I put a note up on the, on the website and it was hard to.
Of course I did not.
Yeah, but it's actually going to be on the eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah.
So knowing that it's not on Weathersfield but Dodge.
So they're not going over the Mill River?
No.
From Weathersfield? They're.
No, it's a common driveway off of Dodge.
Yeah, this is, you know where the apartments are, on one thirty-three?
Right.
So between that and the Herrick Farm, there's five new lots going there. There's one common driveway that serves three of those lots and one of the guys down that common driveway wants to build an accessory barn in addition to his house. But nothing is going through the end of Mill Road and particularly not traversing.
But he doesn't have a small stream, I think, that's why he's not going over.
No, I, so this isn't.
This is not going past the farm.
The golf, it's not going to the golf, you mean the, the building by the door.
The, the thirty-six acres on Weathersfield, over the Mill River, Chip Herricks.
The, I know, again, we're not talking about the same property.
That's a different, that's not even, oh, I wonder.
That's the guy that's got the Concom after him because he put the bridge across the waterway.
Oh, I think, I thought this meeting was, the potential buyers was trying to get approval for.
It's running in the paper.
I think barn and.
I think what you, it's running in the paper today, but it's advertising for October eleventh.
Really?
Yeah.
That was today?
Yeah.
I understand, he's on.
I can only tell you that the one that, you know, if it is stone, right?
Yeah, well, that's, that's the one that, that's the.
That's on Dodge and Mill between the apartments and the Herrick Farm milkhouse there, so it's not nowhere near Weathersfield.
Yeah, so what you're talking about is, it is going to be an application.
For a barn and a few houses or something.
Well, the barn is, is the Douglas Stone application. The one you're talking about is the five forty Weathersfield has to do with, with a bridge, there's a bridge. I mean, they're both Herrick.
Right, right.
You're right about that, but it's not, it's not up yet in, in terms of, for the public hearing, that's, that's later.
No, I, yeah, I wasn't talking about the bridge, but the, what the potential buyers were gonna do.
The five forty Weathersfield is, is the one with the, is, is the bridge that's in the flood plain and the Concom is the one.
So they, that's not, that's not, that's not being discussed for development, it's really just for how he may have violated conservation law.
No, yeah, no, he's already, or he's selling it, it's already divided and being sold.
So I thought that's what this meeting was for, for the potential buyers and what they're going to build there.
And you saw this on, what, where did, where did, did you see the ad? Where did you see it? It was on the town.
I thought it was.
It was here. You know what, I can only say that, not tonight, there's no way, I mean, we haven't done any special permitting. They can't do anything until they come through here. If you're on a butter, you'll get notice and it'll certainly be in the paper.
That's what I was wondering why I didn't, as, as a butter, I didn't get notified that.
Because there's nothing on.
Well, that makes me feel a lot better.
Okay, so, good. People look at the agenda and if it is affecting something that, you know, you, if it's a project that abuts your property or you're within, what?
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's some jurisdiction requirements, you'll get notice.
This is the ad for the Douglas Stone, which is on October eleventh and the only actual parcel identification that's available because otherwise it's zero Mill Road, but it's accessory map five one oh four lot five.
Yeah, that's a different property entirely.
Yeah.
But that's the, that's the one with the accessory barns, that's where, that's what's running, this is actually what was sent to the town comment. So I, I, I guess I'm just, I'm gonna, I'll go back and look, sorry, but the, the one that, that, that you're talking about with the accessory barn, that's October eleventh.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, that wasn't, I just have heard that.
Did you enjoy the meeting? Alright, well, I think though, you know, keep an eye on it, that's, but I'm sorry, but, you know.
So anything that would be proposed on that, on that property would be, all the butters would be notified.
If you're in a butter, you will absolutely be notified and if you're not in a butter, it still goes out to public notice and you can read about it in the town, town comment and certainly the webpage. Okay?
Alright, thank you very much.
Terrific.
Oh, you're building that, oh, you're building, is that what you see?
That, that's.
The castle you see there?
It was one of the neighbors.
I think that's in Norway.
No, okay, gotcha. So, you know what, I would suggest we, you got some notes you need, or anything we need, any signatures?
Uh, yes, I do.
I'm gonna say we adjourn early without doing minutes because we missing our.
Early.
Yeah, right.
I submitted a report on that, the one we were just talking about, anybody seen? No. Do you have my report on the stone?
Yes, I do, but I, I wasn't gonna present it tonight, it's not on.
Have you circulated it?
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
What?
Why are you making my head jump?
Yeah.
I did it about a week ago.
Okay, what, what's, I mean, it's similar to that Sears property on Daniels, he's tunnel building, accessory building, an excessive five hundred feet.
Yeah, I reviewed the whole thing, but my, my main question is, you're tacking on a special permit, on a special permit that hasn't been done yet. You got a special permit for a common drive and now you have a special permit off of the common drive, it's not, how do you do that? I don't, I don't think you do.
I, I'm sorry, what's, I'm sorry.
See, thinking we're, we're looking for a special permit for a use that's not even in existence yet, more or less.
A special permit that's extending an already granted special permit for a common driveway that's not been constructed, so.
Are you, I mean, I, I see why initially that presents a problem. Once the, 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 the house were constructed and there was not a specialty permit for it, do you see any limitation on the ability to grant a special permit on a property that's already, exists by virtue of a special permit?
Yeah, it's not the property, if you grant a special permit for a common driveway, which provides the access to this second special permit.
Yeah, so we have to.
But I don't think we need to talk about this tonight, it's not on the agenda.
Well, at least circulate your reports.
I know, I don't need to talk about it.
I don't wanna walk in, no, I get to the next meeting and there, there it is right.
We'll be, I'll be, I'll be sending the stuff out when, when we do.
I think that something like that.
You gotta build a house?
Yeah.
It's not built yet.
It's not built yet.
And he wants to put a barn.
He wants to put a barn, yeah.
What's wrong with that?
Yeah.
It's a public hearing on the eleventh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have good.
Okay.
By wait till you build your house, build a garage, be a car.
The public hearing is on the eleventh, so that's the next.
Due process.
It's thinking ahead.
Yeah.
One thing at a time.
Well, one thing at a time, but I mean, I also could see not wanting to develop the site without, you know, if you have a master plan for it, why have to do it piecemeal?
Yeah, why build your house and then two years later get your barn and buy cars?
Discuss the permit.
That would make sense.
It does require more thought.
Yeah.
He's got his house approved and then he wants to get a barn.
Yeah.
The, the.
Not in a rush.
I'm not sure that he's got a building permit for a house, I'm not sure anybody could have a building permit for a house without the common driveway.
So, he doesn't have a building, who's saying he doesn't have the building permit for the house?
I don't know if he does, I doubt that he does.
I don't think Ken would issue one. No, right.
But like I say, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, well, you know, what, we got two weeks anyhow.
Yeah, that's on the next.
Send that, send that to, to everybody. I'll take a look at it, you know, and, you guys wanna look at it, I mean, I think we gotta decide at some point whether we should ask the town council if they could, you know, we wanna engage the town's lawyer to have, to answer that question. If we, if we have the jurisdiction, we can proceed on it, given that there's no, it's accessory use, accessory use to non-existing primary use.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a case of controversy.
Is there, is there some precedent for this? Because the, I mean, this is the, the common driveway, special permit was submitted, you know, that was to provide the, that was done by Herrick.
Right.
Prior to having, you know, a prospective buyer. Now, it's the buyer who's coming in and wants to develop the lot, they wanna build the house and they wanna have an accessory barn. So I, I, I'm not sure why.
So they wanna know that before they purchase the original special permit or whatever, before they go ahead to.
Yeah, I think they wanna get their approvals, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, is that unusual, like?
Well.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It is, but it isn't, but it's still, still should be given some thought.
I mean, we can have the town council.
I mean, if there's.
Well, I guess, you know, maybe I'm oversimplifying, can you have an accessory use to when you don't have a primary use presently?
Well, I mean.
He doesn't even have a permit to, to build the primary use.
Yeah.
So we really have a.
I mean, I see what you're saying, but if you, if you.
We can't do it in a hypothetical sense, we have to do it in an actual sense.
You have to file a plan showing everything, right? The house and the barn.
If the house.
Well, you haven't seen the plan yet, so, but.
In a moment.
Yeah, if the house were already built, if it was already established.
Yeah.
And someone was coming in to buy the house and they wanted to know if they could do that.
Yeah.
That's a different case.
Yeah.
But if you don't have the house built yet.
Well, the house is on the plan, but you guys haven't seen the plan yet, so, that's why we're, we're talking about this prematurely.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it, it hasn't been, you know, I haven't presented you with the information yet. I'll go say that, you know, the house is on the plan and along with the barn. But the, but the special permit is not for the house, there's no special permit that's required before the building of the house. They can get a building permit to build the house. And as far as the special permit for the barn, I mean, it could be conditioned, if the house is not already built, that the house be built first or be built concurrently with the, the accessory barn.
Well, that's, that's one avenue, but the other stronger avenue is you got a special permit for a common driveway that gets you to the house.
Yeah.
It's like saying you're gonna issue a building permit in a subdivision for the lot way back here and you don't have a road in there yet.
Well, the.
I mean, I think, we could look at it from with the.
The drive, you're talking about having the construction of the, the construction of the common driveway completed for it, right? Before they build the house and before they build the barn.
I don't know how, yeah, I don't think Ken would issue a building permit on, on a, for a lot that doesn't have access.
But then that doesn't, does that prevent, does that prevent from.
Approving a plan?
Approving a plan, you just wouldn't, he wouldn't, he wouldn't issue a building permit for either structure unless the driveway were constructed.
Could go along with that, but if you do go that way, you better be sure you put a condition in your, any approval you take that the chicken needs to come before the egg.
Yeah, but I mean, that, like, like I said, that can be a condition, I mean, that's, that's something, but we were actually talking about this before we even had the.
Alright, well, I just brought it up and the letter ain't gone out yet, so it was a surprise in this case, so. Good, so let's look at it, think about whether we can, you know, Gene seems, you know, I trust your institutional memory here from what's, what's gone down, you know, and.
Such the Spanish Civil War.
It reminds me of that Ted Danson chord, but, but, so, and Cliff is also a great source for, you know, what we, what we have done. Kinda gives us a shorthand on what we need to do next time. So I'd like to find out what he has to say, but, you know, I certainly doesn't mean we're gonna withdraw from the hearing, let's, let's keep moving forward on it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah.
Right, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, let's proceed. If, if there's something that stands in our way from moving forward, then I guess we'll have to deal with that, you know?
And after working with Larry for about fourteen years, I've kind of come to trust him.
I, yes, I do, I, I have. Okay, what do we need, we need one more. Not too bad. I think we should, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
One second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank, great, so we're done?